Okay, everybody. Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, June 18th, 7:00 PM in the Green Room. Let's begin with a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The second item, are there any visitors who wish to speak? Nope. Okay. Hearing none. Item number three is the approval of minutes for the June 4th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Okay. Item number four, appointments and reappointments. We'll begin with the three appointments if everyone is here. Is Bruce King here? Oh, hello, Bruce.
Hello.
Hey, nice to see you. So we have, I'll do them separately. Barbara Segaloff, who would like to be appointed to Conservation Commission for a term until 6/30/2027. Barbara, would you like to speak to it, or? You don't need to. No, you're not required to.
Okay, but I think I will.
Okay, great.
Good evening to all. Our family bought a home in Clinton 23 years ago. And the draw being the beauty of the shoreline and Clinton's peacefulness. I would be pleased and honored to have the opportunity to serve on the Conservation Commission and to become involved in protecting and preserving Clinton's natural and cultural resources. While a New Haven resident and now a resident of Clinton, I serve on a wide range of boards and actively involved in advocacy and civic engagement. I believe my years of service and board experiences will bring value to the Conservation Committee and its mission, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Barbara? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations. And if you would be sworn in in the Town Clerk's office before the next meeting. Sure, thank you. Next is Teresa O'Rourke, who is hoping to be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, a full seat until 11/2025. Teresa, would you like to speak? I know you're an alternate now, right?
Yes, I'm an alternate now. I've completed two years of the training that's required for the role, and I have a background in residential housing and development, so I have an understanding of zoning and its regulations and their functions. So I'd like to continue to serve the town. I think I can do an effective job.
Thank you. Any questions for Terry? Oh, is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations. And to get sworn in, too, please. Thank you. And then our third appointment is Bruce King for the Zoning Board of Appeals' alternate seat for a term until 11/2025. Bruce, would you like to?
Well, I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I'll kind of make an attempt. I'm kind of new to the area. I've been here about seven years now. My background has always been in retail, food retail. I was a store manager, so I'm kind of used to dealing with people, conflict, management, those types of things. So I look forward to the opportunity to be able to serve the town.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Bruce? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for serving. So with the reappointments, they're not required to be here, so I believe I'll run them all down. I'll read Mary Young for Economic Development Commission for a term until 6/30/2029. Gail Henrick, Board of Ethics, for a term until 6/30/30. Joseph Scatino, Brian Smith, and Robert Karsich for Park and Rec until 6/30/2029. Brian Manware, Public Works Commission, for a term until 6/30/2029. Alan Murphy and Jerome Warner for the Shellfish Commission for a term until 6/30/2027. Carol Geiser and Diane Brennan for the Tree Committee until 6/30/2027. James Norrie and Richard Way, the Local Veterans Advisory Committee, until 6/30/2027. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Item number five. Exemption request to Ordinance 194-4A and 194-5A for the International Food and Beer Festival. Paul Orsini is here to speak to that? Do you want to speak to that? You look.
I can tell you it's Friday, July 11th, from 5 to 9 in the Town Hall parking lot. It is the fourth year we've had it, and the event will be set up exactly the same as last year. Stage, the acts from 5 to about 8:30. Last call at the Beer Garden will be at 8:30, and we'll get everybody out of here right around dark.
And before the motion, I'll just ask.
Can I add one thing? This is a placemakers event, not a chamber event.
And before we make the motion, if you would provide the office with a copy of the temporary legal liquor permit and the proof of liability insurance.
Yeah, Mary and I have been talking today.
Okay, all right. So I'd like to have a motion to approve the exemption request for the International Food and Beer Festival. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Paul. Item number six, the Plan of Conservation and Development Update in Abbey. Our town planner is here to speak with us.
So I will be super, super brief. I'm really here to make introductions. So we're here tonight to give you an update on where the Planning and Zoning Commissions work is with the update to our 10-year comprehensive plan, right? So this is, well, comprehensive also includes zoning. But in this case, the Plan of Conservation and Development is really our roadmap for the next 10 years. So the last one we did was in 2015. Obviously, times have changed, and we've been working on this for months to bring in public feedback. We had a very successful survey, had well over 400 respondents from various places around town. We have held a workshop in this room for folks to come and give us feedback about their priorities. And out of those priorities, we have started to distill some basic goals and themes for the plan that will begin to be the shaping, that will guide the drafting of the plan itself. So before we go too deep into drafting, we wanted to make sure that this body, who will ultimately be asked to help approve this plan, is on board, make sure we haven't missed anything, and get your feedback tonight. So with me tonight, there's, Beau Clark is in the audience. He is the Chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission as a subcommittee specifically set aside for this project. So we'll let Beau speak, too. And also David Murphy is our lead consultant from Resilient Land and Water. And so he can kind of go through a whole bunch of this stuff with you, too.
As I mentioned, I'm Beau Clark, I'm Vice Chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission and Chairman of the Subcommittee working on the POCD. We've been at this since November, and we've actually made very good progress in a very short time on this. At the last Planning and Zoning meeting, the draft was presented to P&amp;Z in whole. And I believe that Dave will fill you in on everything, but we've touched on a lot of different areas, and the commission, or the committee, rather, seems to be in agreement with the general idea. We've got to fine-tune it, and actually, we need your feedback to continue fine-tuning it even further. Thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to David.
Okay, thank you. And I know there was something in the packet about this, and what we did was put together a shorter version of it for tonight, in case we were running long. But I do have all the slides that you saw previously with me tonight. So after we go through the short version, if we need to, we can go to some of those slides. So I thought we'd go through the vision and the goal statements and some of the strategies, and then if there's time, we can look at some of the actions and activities. So our vision, for the town's vision, was that it could fit on one page, one screen, per se, so a little bit shorter than the last Plan of Conservation and Development. And it's got three parts. The Clinton is part, so what is the town now? What is coming up, looking forward over the next 10 years? And then our statement, you know, the really important closing statement, is what Clinton will be in 2035. So it's set up like most vision statements, and that is sort of the guidebook for the goals that come next. We can go back to this. So we have six goal statements at this point in time, condensed out of all the engagement that's occurred in working with the commission. They are reinforce downtown Clinton as the community's civic and local business center, position the town for economic and grandeurist growth, promote the vibrant waterfront, diversify housing opportunities for all, support resilient infrastructure, services, and facilities, and then protect and enhance open space, natural resources, and historic areas. So that's a lot of words, and what we like to do is show all of you that those are kind of also themes. So if we condense those words down, we can see the six main themes of the plan, where we're heading. So downtown, economic development, waterfront, housing, infrastructure, services, facilities, then open space, natural resources, historic resources. And so our hope is that everything that you dream of for Clinton for the next 10 years fits in these themes and fits in those goal statements. So then stepping through those, I'm going to go through the six goal statements. They're going to be here at the top in this colored banner. And I'm showing you right now the main strategies that support that goal statement. So in the packet that you have, you have something with a lot more words, where we have the bullets underneath these strategies with all the individual actions. And so if there's questions or there's time, we can go back to those. But right now, I want to focus on the main strategies that support each goal. So under the downtown Clinton goal statement, we have a statement about infrastructure that supports whatever we want downtown. It's going to need some infrastructure, so sidewalks, water, wastewater, power, all the things that let us be a community. Building critical mass downtown, so making sure there's enough activity there so people want to use the downtown area. Provide consistent, flexible, and adaptable regulations. Support growing the arts district. And then making sure there's some connection to other activity centers like the waterfront. So those are the primary strategies under that goal. Under economic development, and you'll see some overlap, which is important, because we want to recognize the overlap. The three main strategies for this goal are ensuring regulatory mechanisms are in place to promote that growth that you want. Make sure that there's a leveraging of existing properties. And there's some feeling that some of them may not be completely utilized, but I think in general, Clinton's doing well. But we've heard a few times from different people that there's opportunity there, so that's what the second bullet gets at. And then the third bullet is about employment development, workforce development. Because you can't just build it, you need to also have someone to work there. And so this would help the town to develop a workforce and support a workforce. We've got two big strategies under the vibrant waterfront, which we think capture most of the actions and activities. So the first one is to encourage a resilient waterfront through strategic planning and investment, so making sure that the Marina District, those water-dependent uses and the public access is all going to be resilient to storms that are coming and coastal hazards, but also resilient to economic conditions as they change. That word can mean a couple of different things, resilient. And then make sure that Clinton has a great accessible waterfront. People can get to the water and have access to the planned Blue Way, but making sure that is supported and goes forward. Under our goal statement for housing, we've got two main strategies. The first one is kind of a lot of words, but really, it's getting at making sure that there's diverse housing types, scales, and densities within town. Because over the next 10 years, as demographics shift a little bit, people are aging in place, but family sizes are getting smaller. Maybe new people are coming in, and you want to promote housing for new families that want to move to town. We'll need diverse housing types for that. But then also, we need to not forget those who need affordable housing and seniors who need special housing options. So the second bullet gets at some of that. On our goal statement for infrastructure, services, and facilities, we've got four main strategies. The first one being support a safe, sustainable, and resilient multimodal transit network. So we've heard it from many people. We want the trolley, we want extra mile like Madison has. So not just the cars that we rely on, but also other kinds of transit. And of course, the train station, having more service available to Shoreline East. The second one is to advance sustainability and energy-related efforts and partnerships so that we have kind of a more sustainable transit network going forward. The third one is to maintain and develop resilient facilities, infrastructure, and utilities. Remember, that one overlaps with, we saw that on the downtown Clinton about infrastructure and utilities. So again, we're honoring that overlap. We need it in certain places, but we also need it townwide. And then support the maintenance and expansion of recreational resources. They're already doing a great job. Make sure that they stay in place and are supported over the next 10 years. And I think this is our sixth goal statement, our last one. So protect and enhance open space, natural resources, and historic areas. And we've got three main strategies that line up with those three parts. So open space network, town's doing a great job. Make sure that's not lost. Look for ways to enhance that. Protect natural resources, we've heard it tonight. Conservation Commission has a new member, and she spoke about the town's resources. And then lastly, historic, cultural, and arts and scenic resources that are also important to protect. So that's about it that I have for the presentation. And if there's a need, we can go to some of the bullets that you saw in your packet. We can talk about some of the individual actions and activities. We haven't worked out exactly how many there will be. We don't want to have hundreds, because it makes the plan difficult to implement over the next 10 years. So we're looking for a way to find a nice number of actions that support those goals. Questions?
How many people actually took that POCD survey?
We did pretty well. We had 450, which is great. We're working in Waterbury right now, where 30 people have taken the survey in a town that's 10 times larger. And we're also working in another community near you where we're well under 100. So you guys did a great job. You all got the word out. All of you got the word out. Told your neighbors to take the survey. We read all the responses, and I really do think that these six goals cover everything that we heard, which is great.
And just to point out, too, one of the things that we'll be doing is we're making a video for the end of the week that will have sort of a summary of this presentation and in a way for the general public, for other boards and commissions, and a separate place for staff to be able to give additional feedback to this. We want to make sure that we are reaching and sort of ground-truthing, you know, did we get it right before the draft comes out, you know, toward the end of the summer, and we're asking folks to approve a plan. We want to make sure that we're headed in the right direction.
I was involved with the POCD in the Town of Orange, where I previously lived, and the bulk of participation here has been much greater than in Orange. And I think it's complementary to Abby's reach out and also David's program as well.
Beau, may I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Would it be fair to say that all members of the Planning and Zoning Commission agree with this?
Agree with this? Agree with the framework, yes. We haven't gotten down to the nitty-gritty, but yes. We had this presented to the entire commission at our last meeting, and there were no people that were opposed to any particular parts of it. We came up with a couple of suggestions. One of them, you know, initially, we had the bullets, and then we, you know, the committee, or the commission, rather, questioned that we didn't want to have one particular thing be more important than the other, so we went to a color-coded version. And also, in the plan, when it gets printed, instead of a chapter, the pages to do it, either have a header or a margin that's color-coded so you can go right to that area of the POCD that you're interested in. So it's going along smoothly, and as I said, I didn't think there was anybody on the commission when it was presented to them in totality that objected to any parts of it.
That's good to hear. Thanks. Any other questions? No? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who did you there? Should I ask Abby to speak to it, or no? Maybe not. I don't know if she's going to be here. Abby, are you going to stay for the rest of the meeting? Okay, all right. Thank you. The next item is seven. Proposal for a full-time student resource officer at Jared Elliott Middle School, and both the chief and Mary Ann are here to address it.
Real quick, thank you for giving me the time. I'll try to be really brief on this. This is just an overview presentation for you in the beginning, but I also wanted to update you on some things. You see, I have some new equipment on my body here. We are now completing Phase Two of our radio project, our townwide radio project, which was the delivery of all of our portable radios and our mobile radios. Phase One was completed with the ECC. And then now we have all the portables delivered to the Fire Department, Police Department, and they've been deployed, which has already improved our operational capability a great deal. The last phase is the infrastructure thesis that we have in place. We are currently at least six months ahead of schedule, and we are on budget for that. Also, we completed our transition to our new sidearm, duty sidearm platform. That was completed just Tuesday. We completed the last officers that have done that. It's proven to be a tremendous asset to us in that our scores, our accuracy, and our speed have increased at least 35% across the board, with over 50% of our officers with perfect qualifying scores. So what does that mean? That means in the very rare instance that we may have to implement and shoot and use deadly force, our accuracy is much greater, so there is a far less chance of us actually hitting somebody that we shouldn't. So we can stop the threat much quicker. It's a much nicer platform, so again. And the cap on that one is we came in $9,500 under budget for the entire project. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, and I want to thank you for helping us improve our capabilities, because we were getting a little bit stale, and we had some concerns. So much thanks to you. It's making our officers and our firefighters much safer with the radio system. So, thank you. Now, on to the next piece of business. I'm going to sit. I normally don't, but I'm going to sit for this one, because there's a few things that I did want to point out to you. So the reason I'm here is that over the past five years, we have seen a tremendous shift in law enforcement nationwide in that we have a very difficult time recruiting officers to this profession. On top of that, there's been a pretty much paradigm shift in the way policing is perceived throughout the country. I think when I got here in 2016, I think it's clear that I implemented a community policing model, which was very widely accepted here in the town. I think we've seen great results with that. With that being said, I think we're at a juncture now where we have a demonstrated need for another full-time SRO, which is School Resource Officer, that would be permanently placed at the middle school for the school year and obviously remain on staff to help us with summer and our regular workload as we progress throughout the year. Mary Ann is here to support. I've talked to the school administration, we've talked to school faculty, and I've had some discussions with the town manager and with the town finance director to just try and figure out, you know, what exactly is the need here. So I would say, and Chris talks to this all the time, since my arrival here in 2016, I think we've seen a complete transformation of the way that our adolescent population interacts with the police department. And I don't think anybody can argue with our success of the implementation of our program at the high school. It's seen tremendous results year after year after year through not only the charisma of our SROs and the connections they have, because we've gone through multiples, but we also added the dog to that program, which has really opened up and expanded our capability to reach out to that group of individuals. So we would like to mirror that at the middle school level, when I think there's a true need for that. So I would like to just also highlight and thank Mary Ann for, I think we have a tremendous working relationship here in Clinton between the police department and the public school system. And you would think that that would be pretty much standard across the board, but it isn't. A lot of people get very parochial about the school system and what law enforcement's role should be and how things should work on both sides. Not saying it's the school, it happens on my side as well. Law enforcement wants to demand what they want. We've always had a very strong working collaborative relationship, and out of that, we formed our School Crisis Advisory Board, which we've had running now for nearly nine years, over eight years. It's a multidisciplinary team that looks at school safety in a very holistic manner. We understand that, you know, it's very easy for law enforcement to say, I can make your school safe. Right? I can make it like a prison, but that's not a good learning environment. So we always try to strike that balance, and we're always looking at ways to try and improve where we stand. And one of the successes that we've seen is our SRO program and how that works. So where we sit now is that, I think, looking at the communities around us, I've done a survey of all the communities around us. I would just give you a quick brief on our student population. Currently, we sit at just under 1,500 students in the district. Since 2000, we've seen, unfortunately, school shootings have grown tenfold in the last 20 years. Since the FBI started keeping records in 2000, 2001, there was a total of 30 school shootings. Four in elementary schools, three in middle schools, 23 in high schools. The '21, '22 school year ended with over 300. That's 82 in elementary schools, 37 in middle schools, and 189 in high schools. So the trend is not going down. It's continually trending upward. We have one SRO which covers the entire district. It's taxing, and it doesn't provide the services that we'd like to see delivered to our school population and provide the safety that we feel is necessary. Madison has a school population of just over 2,400. They have two full-time SROs, one in the high school, one in the middle school, plus two additional armed security officers at the high school and unarmed security at the middle school and all their elementary schools. Old Seabrook has a school population of just over 1,000. They have three SROs, one at each one of their schools. Essex has a school population of about 675, and they have three SROs as well, one at each one of their schools. Guilford has, their population, their school population is a little bit more than 3,100. And again, three SROs, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and one spread amongst their elementary schools. So doing the math and sitting down with Bob, I wanted to come to you and provide you with a true number of what I believe it would cost on an annual basis. I just don't want to give you a salary figure. I want to give you salary, insurance, any kind of additional pays that we have, our contributions to FICA, our contributions to the pension fund. And what we're looking at is a Step Two officer, because I would use an officer should we be able to get this program implemented. I would use an officer that's already currently on staff that we would train and sit down with school staff and decide who would be the best fit for that. And then we would hopefully go out and replace that officer with a new officer. So we would increase our staffing by one, and the figure for that would be between $155,000 and $176,000 annually, depending on what they're taking for health insurance. Obviously, the higher end one is a full-family medical plan. The lowest end of it would be just a singular officer. We have a number of calls for service at the middle school. It's also, I feel, one of our least secure facilities in the district as far as facility-wise. So it would be helpful to have that officer there full-time. And I would say the length of time that it takes us, again, which is another reason why I'm coming to you now, and I understand that I didn't budget for this. And the reason I didn't budget for that is I'm normally given a zero-growth budget, but I see a need here that needs to be addressed, and I'm going to offer you a possibility for a way to fund this program on our side, which is not just tax-based. So basically, our newest officer is still not on the street. I hired him in October. He had to go to the academy for six months. He had to go to the academy for six months. He's still only halfway through his FTO program, and he won't be out until the end of July. So we're looking at a full 10 months for me to hire a new officer and get them out on the street. So there's a real cost involved with that, in that if we're short one or two officers, we have to fill, we have to backfill, and it's overtime, so that's time and a half, and it really runs up our numbers. I think I demonstrated, when I got here, we had a straight 5-2 work schedule, which had no room or no margin for error, so if someone took the day off or someone was out sick, we caused constant hirings. And if you look back, and I provided Bob with the numbers from earlier on, 2014, 2015, you were still looking at $350,000 to $380,000 a year in overtime. I haven't come anywhere near that, and I'm 10 years past with raises and everything else. This hasn't been adjusted for inflation. So, by moving us to a 4-2 schedule, which was a lot of pushback at the time, people thought we were giving people, you know, all these days off, we were really moving the schedule from 40 hours to 37 and a half, and we reduced our overtime nearly $180,000 to $200,000. So, and we're not burning out our workforce. That's my other problem, is that we're always working on a razor's edge. So we don't have a lot of give and take. If I have to send people for training, if we have somebody that's out injured, there's a lot of order-ins, and there's a lot of callback to service. So, we gotta make sure that we can provide a work environment that has a little bit of give and take. So, I would hope that we could get to a point where the council would see the need and provide us the opportunity to make an additional hire, to staff us at 28. The town has been growing. I see the opportunity now. Our grant list is getting larger. Our call volumes are getting bigger. I think it's very difficult for us to staff where we are now. It's been 27 for 10 years. I know our population figure hasn't grown substantially. However, our population, our sitting population is not what we are forced to police every day. I would say, on average, we're policing probably 25,000 to 30,000 a day, even though our sitting population is less than 14,000. The mall brings in 4 million visitors a year. We are located right off I-95. Summertime rentals, we're up another 8,500, plus transient voting population. So, we can demonstrate the need for service and staffing. Now, I understand that this is a big ask, and I'm not asking for answers today. I just wanted to kind of float the idea to you, sit here and answer questions that you may have about, you know, why I feel the need for it now and not during the next budget season. With that being said, we've also, we're not on the schedule for this, but it dovetails into how we would offer a methodology to pay for this officer, and that my commission has approved at their last meeting, me coming to you and making a presentation about the implementation, the possible implementation of automated traffic enforcement, i.e. speed cameras and traffic cameras. We've already conducted a study with the company, and based on the figures that we have with, from them, we're looking at, with an 80% pay rate and a 90% reduction of the numbers we've already seen in violations, we're looking at about $100,000 a month in revenue from those, just in a very limited area. But obviously, that's a, it's a heavy lift. It would entail the council coming up with an ordinance. We have ordinance language from both Milford and from Middletown to look at as a base. But if that is something that you'd be, I had to put that out there to you first. I didn't know if you'd even be, if we don't want to do it at all, or is that something that we would be willing to look at? From my commission's side and from my command staff's side, implementation of that program really doesn't have a downside. We're either going to get the voluntary compliance and make our road safer, and if we don't get the compliance that we want, we're gonna generate enough funds to purchase officers to get them out there, to get the safety, to get that traffic enforcement done. So, from a public safety standpoint, it's a win-win. From a political standpoint, I understand, it can be very different. People don't want, you know, there's certain things that have to be navigated. So, I don't want to be presumptuous to say, "Hey, this is a no-brainer for us to do it," but on the public safety side, it presents two upsides rather than a tough downside. So, what I would ask is that if we can find a way to possibly get this funded, I would like to have it up for the school year, the upcoming school year. If not, I mean, obviously, I'm gonna have to budget for it next year and approaching next year, but as I had mentioned before, the difficulty of getting quality candidates, putting them through the academy is such a time-consuming process that we lose officers, and I'm always behind. I can't get caught up, and it puts us at a disadvantage. So it's not cut and dry. I can't just hire somebody and have them out on the road. You know, in the business world, we hire somebody, they're ready to go, we put them through a training program, and maybe a month or two, they're ready to go. I'm looking at almost a full year before we can get, and that's still an unproven commodity. You know, I took a, we took a seasoned officer from a major city, and they couldn't function here. They couldn't handle the workload that we have. So, we had to start from scratch again. We had somebody we thought we were gonna get them up and going, and after 14 weeks, they could not handle the workload. So, they left, and now I'm back in the hole again.
Any questions?
So you have the, you have the officer that's still in training. So you said you would want to have it up by September. So you're proposing to take that officer and, or take an officer from the force and make them the SRO, have that officer fill, and then hire somebody else?
Correct, and hopefully, we would be able to get a good lateral transfer, but that market has really been worked over. So, worst-case scenario is we'd have to hire, and it's gonna take another 10 months to get where we are. Luckily, we were able to hire ahead. Of course, we lost the one person, but we were, we had this guy in the pipeline. It was supposed to fill another hole. But at least now, I have one local kid that we're gonna hire and hopefully have him in the academy July 11th. Our current officer on FTO should be done at the end of, at the end of July. So, by the time September or August rolls around, he should be out, ready to pull full shifts. He's doing very, very well. We don't expect that we're gonna extend him at all.
And I don't, you said you talked to Bob and Michelle. If we did not do the cameras, is there, what, how would we fund that? How would we fund it?
So, I mean, what we've talked about is the possibility of, there's some non-lapsing funds with Board of Education that may be able to be moved over to a salary item, and then we would have, if we have, we're expecting some surplus for this year, and then I would budget for it next year as part of my municipal operating budget. So we would rebudget that spot.
So, when the taxpayer asks, what is the value of an SRO officer in Elliott?
I would say we could just point to our success in the high school, and we are gonna mirror that program. And I think that we have an opportunity there, number one, to secure the campus, make it much safer, and we have a real opportunity to reach out and connect to that age group and mentor them and provide a lot of positive influence. That will carry over as they move up into the high school. Now, they're already, they're already familiar with the SRO. They're already familiar with that whole process. They have a comfortable relationship with law enforcement, and they're more apt to interact with us. I always say that one of our, I knew things had turned around when I had one of my SROs in the school three years ago, Sergeant Mags now, but it was Officer Mags at the time. One of our kids was OD'd on a dab pen. He was OD'ing in the bathroom, and who did he call? He called my SRO to come get him, to help him. So, to me, that was a huge monumental shift from where we were. That was, he wasn't afraid. He called for help. So I feel we can implement that same thing at that level. I think it's really needed at that lower level, because we're seeing these shootings, unfortunately, and violent acts happening at younger and younger ages. So, if we can have the ability to be in there and be mentors and have positive building relationships there, that to me is greater than the physical security that we're bringing. That's another added benefit. You know, I mean, in a perfect world, I'd love to have an SRO in every one of our schools. I don't think it's, you know, that far-fetched, and I spend a lot of time with the faculty and the administration of the school system. This is not me picking out my problem children that I don't want on the street and I'm gonna bury them someplace. We spend a lot of time ensuring we're picking the right people for this job that have the skill set, that can relate to that age group, that can, you know, model good behaviors and be a mentor to these kids. And I think we've been very successful at it. And, you know, I don't want to toot my own horn, because it's not my, it's not my thing. It's our troops. It's our, it's our relationship with the school system and the program that we've developed over the course of these past nine years that has brought us to where we are, and I think we're really quite successful, and I would say a model for others to follow.
So I hear the staffing concerns or preference rights. I don't know if an SRO is the right way to fix those problems?
I would say that it's, you know, ideally, I would like to have three officers. If you give me that, it would help me a lot more, but this is, to me, a need, and as I explained earlier, I think, you know, the old-fashioned thought of, okay, let's get, let's hire more cops is, I put another black and white on the street, and he's out there running radar, or he's going to the alarm call. We're taxed with far more things now. We have far more investigations. We have online fraud. We have identity thefts. We have all kinds of investigations that are getting done, and we have a lot of school violence. We have a lot of school instances. We have an expectation by the community that we are going to be at all these places and represent a certain character and a certain set of moral principles, if nothing less. I think that it really helps to have us in there. And when you look at the communities that surround us, everybody has already gone that direction. They're far ahead of us. We're really kind of working behind the eight ball with everyone around us, being with only one covering the entire district.
You said Madison uses armed security to supplement?
So, yes, they have two full-time SROs, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and they add two additional armed security guards at the high school and one armed security at the middle school, and then they have unarmed security at all their elementary schools.
Why did they choose that?
I have no idea. I think it was a little bit more, again, a little bit of politics. Certain, they didn't want guns in the school, or whatever the case may be. But they didn't, I didn't get a complete answer as to why that was done.
The $100,000 that revenue would get, that would be from tickets and from?
That would be a monthly, and that's a monthly revenue. So, basically, it's a civil violation. So basically, when there's, the state statute clearly states how it has to be set up, how the ordinance has to read, and then there are six ways that you can dispute the ticket, and if you just, and they're very clearly defined. And then we send you, it doesn't affect, it's not like when my police officer writes you a ticket. When the police officer writes you a ticket, you have points attached to your license, the fine goes to centralized infraction, and then we get a small portion of that. This is a civil fine, so basically, the company generates the, generates the tickets, mails them out, and we get the money back.
If the, if there was a SRO at Elliott, would they sit in the office?
So, we would, we would work with, we would work with the school administration to figure out where their office would be, but they would still be around the school. They'd walk around the school. They would also go over to Joel, just as our other SRO does now. So, they wouldn't be, they would have office space, but they would still move around the facility.
Well, yeah, I'm asking because, like, I think one of the value, well, first of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, the community part of it is great, and I always say that. But the other, the other part would be protecting somebody from trying to get in. So like at Morgan, they're right there on the left when you, when you come in. So if they're, at Elliott, there's no place in that little lobby for them to sit, so...
Well, there's a, there is an office space kind of right next to the, right next, when you come in the front door, just slightly off to the left, there is a small office there, which would probably be a good fit for that officer's position.
Are there other towns that fund police officers in this way?
Right now, the actual automated ticketing system is only used, I think, in Washington, Connecticut. There's several towns that are exploring it. As I mentioned, Milford is doing it, and so is Middletown. And I've been in close contact with Chief Costa over there, and we talk about language, and we talk about implementation. So, we would be a little bit ahead of the curve in that. It's very beneficial to us cost-wise. The contract that we would have with the company, Aliment, is, we could break it at any point in time, and we have no obligation. The first several tickets that are written fund the cost of the cameras, and if for some reason we aren't reaching whatever the level of the camera rental is per month, they just hold that in abeyance, and if we break the contract, there's no, we don't have to pay it. So, there's a zero cost to us to do that, other than we would just have to appoint an administrator to oversee it, any kind of...
Would you eliminate the need for cops to sit in the car with a radar gun on the...
Well, I mean, in the places that we put it, and, you know, we put it in, we've identified the spots where we did the, the study are all on the 81 corridor. So, we have High Street and North High intersection for a red light camera, because a ton of lefts out of that one. Glenwood at 81, we put another red light camera there, which had off-the-charts violations for right on red there. 63 Southbound at that four-way intersection, a number of red light violations there as well. And then we set up the speed cameras. We set them at Morgan, which is a lot of, a lot of violations there as well. And then we had a couple ancillary spots around town on residential streets, but we figured we should start, we'd like to start the program on 81. That's the highest, from Walnut Hill down to Route 1 is the highest volume of travel that we have in, in the town. And from North High Street to Walnut Hill is our highest concentration of motor vehicle accidents, because obviously, that's where we have our two offshoots of 95, high, high levels of traffic. And we figure, and again, so those numbers that I gave you about $100,000 a month, and that, that is calculated at a 90% reduction of violations from what we saw. So normally, it would be 90% higher, plus an 80% rate of pay. So we're also figuring that 20% of people aren't gonna pay, aren't gonna pay the fine. So that's a very realistic figure. So I don't want to come here and say, "Hey, we're gonna make all this money," and the intent is not to make money. The intent is to get voluntary compliance to the laws. So, we're thinking that to start out on 81, the majority of town residents are gonna understand where these things are, and we're gonna get compliance through these areas. And then your transient population are the ones that are probably gonna generate most of your monetary fines.
That's all only good. I think we have two separate issues here. One's the camera issue, which may or may not happen. The immediate thing is the police officer. How do we fund it? Without cameras, without anything else, how are we gonna fund it? We need $155,000 now for this year. You don't have it in the budget. So where do we get it from? Before we say, you know, the camera thing is another separate issue, and if that happens, that's great. It's pie in the sky, and we get that done in the future. Right now, we have to pay for this officer. How do we do it?
I got a question to piggyback that. Is the existing SRO position subsidized by the school system or Board of Education?
No, it would only be to, an implementation piece. So we would carry it moving forward in the next fiscal year budget, operating budget, we would carry it moving forward.
So essentially, the, it's in the PD budget for that SRO position 100%, and there's the BOE position, or BOE budget does not subsidize that position?
That is 100% correct.
So what you just said, we would only need to figure out a way to fund it for one year, and then it would be in your budget?
Correct. And then at that point, you would decide, you know, if you're gonna approve my budget moving forward.
Budget after. We have to come with $155,000 now.
Additional now, and then next year, the budget will be increased.
Then it'll be included in next year's budget.
Some of that, the reason I asked that question was, in some of those communities, when you talk about the security guard, armed security, or other schools, or other systems that we compare ourselves to, is there some... that we compare ourselves to, is there some subsidy from the Board of Education side themselves, knowing that that officer is dedicated for three quarters of the year as an assignment within the school system? Yes, they can get pulled out, but, you know, that ownership or that, hey, the need for security and the need for that additional level of, you know, staffing, in some way, maybe there's an opportunity for the school system or Board of Education to look to supplement these positions if there needs there. I don't mean to, it's another model in other communities.
No, understood, and, and the reason that I say that I want control of it is I want that officer as my officer. And I don't want, and not to be, not that we don't have a great working relationship with BOA, but decisions for my officers should be made by my command staff, and we should have control of that officer. There's union contracts involved, there's a number of issues involved that have to be navigated, which I think, at the end of the day, it's really all the same money. I mean, I know we, we parse it out other ways, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, it's all taxpayer dollar. So, and I think we've proven to be a strong steward of the taxpayers' dollar. We do very well on a very tight budget every year. I think we deliver product continually, and we find innovative ways to provide services which are not in your norm. So, the majority of our non-traditional law enforcement, community service things are funded through partnerships with, with, with other entities, with community groups, with charity groups, through donations. I do a lot of work through that, and we wouldn't be able to provide the product that we're, we're providing without those, without those source of funds. And, and we understand, you know, what the, what the public expects. I, I pay taxes here too, like everybody else, right? I want to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck.
Do we need a workshop to discuss this, or we have to? Go ahead, Brian.
Going back to the need again, I asked before, when you said crime is changing, I didn't need that, doing online, things like that, that's not what an SRO is going to deal with.
Correct.
There's like 10 to 14-year-olds there.
Correct.
Maybe I didn't need that, that's the next 10-year-olds, but I haven't heard about that in Elliott last yet, right? So, maybe if we could get in the future a better understanding of what the need for an SRO in that school is? Because I, I'm just not here to...
All right, so, basically, I would tell you that the amount of calls that my SRO currently goes to over there to deal with fights, you know, unruly behaviors, criminal cases, abuse cases, and other things, that is what the need is in there. So, yes, I have all these other things that we have to do, but to me, I think the most glaring need that I have as a public service agency at this moment in time is to provide the services, the same services that we're providing at the high school at that level, down at that level at the middle school, because I think that's a, an age group that is really at a transitional point in time, that we can really bring some positive influence and make positive connections there.
Yeah, I understand you getting inside that.
Yeah.
A hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for an SRO for that age group is a big ask.
Understood.
Maybe if you could help quantify the call for the time you stand?
I can, I can provide you with all that information. I, I didn't expect that we were going to go all this deep into it, that's why this was just, you know...
To help inform the safety of the...
I'm more than happy if you, you know, if you want to have, if you, yeah, I just wanted to kind of float the concept out there to you and give you some talking points. I'm more than happy to provide whatever information or whatever data that you would like. I can work with the school, and we can provide you with those things. But I think, again, you know, we're, we're looking at being adaptive and being forward-thinking, and I think that we have done that. So, you know, kind of reacting, I don't want to be, I never, I don't like to be in a position of reacting. When something happens, now I react to it. We are trying, and our whole philosophy in this agency is community policing, and, and if we can implement programs that are going to help prevent crime, that's what we're aiming at. So, it's not about reacting to, you know, if I had 25 calls there, well, maybe I had one call, if we wouldn't have had somebody beat up, or somebody stabbed, or some other issue there if I had had somebody in place. So, again, it's, it's a way of looking at it in a different perspective. And our perspective has always been, if we can prevent a crime from happening by early intervention and by the programs that we put in place, that, that's far more effective than any response we could bring to an incident after it's already occurred.
I mean, going through, you know, is it an ideal time to look for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars?
It's never going to be an ideal time.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we're in a position where we can help improve the environment in that school. And I mean, for me personally, we have an SRO now, just the presence of an officer, I think, would be a huge impact to that age group of kids, where they can have a better relationship with the, with the law enforcement, with, I mean, I'm sure they see a lot of stuff and how law enforcement is treated. And so, there's a lot of good and bad that goes out there, and I think this is a time where, listen, I mean, we find money for a lot of stuff here, and, you know, this is basically finding money for the safety of our children and the people that live in our community. I think it's, it's an important thing to do, I think we have it, we have one now, and I think to put one into a middle school is even just as important, to protect the kids that are there. And I think that the visibility and, and just the officer being there, I think is important too.
And piggyback on that too, we just also need to remember, like the chief mentioned, it's not just putting an ad out in the paper and hiring someone. It is a year, pretty much, from when they get in the academy to the boots at the ground. So, we have to remember that if you wait your next budget, you're waiting almost two years. So, there is that timeframe to consider, that this is unique for this position, because the process is, is quite timey, takes some time to be trained, so. So, why don't we, it sounds like we need to add this as another item at the next, or one of the upcoming town council meetings, with some more information, with more of a formal presentation of an SRO.
Yeah, and basically just have Bob try to come up with an idea where we can get the buck fifty-five.
Okay, so we'll add that to one of the upcoming meetings.
Okay. I appreciate all your time, and I'm, I'm happy to provide you whatever, we'll sit down with Mary Ann and provide you what we can. Obviously, there's a FERPA thing that we can't provide, certain information, but, but we can, we can provide you with some, some numbers.
I'm not asking for names.
We can't, we know we're not going to hear those, but...
And like we've done in previous meetings, if any members of the council would like to send me some specific areas that you would like the chief to touch on in his presentation, so it's more informative to what you're concerned about, please feel free to do that, and then I will get it to him, and we will make sure that it addresses all those issues. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate all your time. I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
All right, the next item is number nine, a line item transfer request from the Clinton, am I not?
Yeah, the April, Pearson.
I'm sorry?
Pearson.
Ah, sorry.
Number eight, sorry.
Please. Okay. So, number eight, Abraham Pearson School Update to Include Access Agreement and Historic Tax Credit.
So, side praise at the final stage, everyone's on board, just waiting for the paperwork to be executed. It should be wrapped up by July 4th, so I can have a go-hay, like, boo hoo, at the end of July, but all's working, going very well there, not going to work, but Judge and everyone's on board. I'm getting updates on that. We are working, we have a meeting, Abby and myself and Christina, we are starting to work on the senior center and just some basics, like what the kitchen needs and things like that. So, we are starting those conversations. And with that, since we are moving to a different phase, the access agreement, which they did have prior, expired, and there are some changes to it, because now they need some different access to the building for the next phase of inspections and, you know, subcontractors doing lockers and things like that. So, there is a marked up version of what the changes are, and this was also prior signed by Richard Brown, so this one also would need your approval for me to enter into that, so that is one. And then they do need, since we are the owners of the building, they need you to authorize me to sign the SHPO tax credit application on behalf of the town. So, these are two motions that we need to be...
Okay. Any questions first?
Yeah, so, I guess the first question would be the discussions that were going on about the build-out, I guess the part that we're taking on, I mean, I guess Abby and, I guess Christina, I mean, are we going to get some information on that? Because there's a lot of costs, I mean, I, I don't even know what we're doing.
I was going to ask the same question. Are we, didn't we form a subcommittee for that, just like we did for the library from the council level? For once we, we're in the build-out phase, are we supposed to get together as a subcommittee for that? I was going to ask the same question.
I was not aware of that. We are, right now, just talking about the use of what the kitchen is, if it's still a warming kitchen, because if it was to be elevated into a kitchen where it had, things have to be cooked and made, it would trigger a commercial kitchen. So, the original plans were that it was a warming kitchen, so we've done some clarification on that of the use of it. And right now, they're just at the stages where the bathrooms, they're, they're doing the design where the bathrooms and stuff have to go for ADA and just pretty much a blank envelope of what we're getting. But sure...
Who's doing this?
The architects that are...
Who are, so they've now hired an architect?
The architects that are doing the project have extended to do the...
So, we're paying that architect to do our design? Does that mean we're the hardest of working, forgetting?
I think that was part of the deal originally.
It was part of the, it was part of that build-out, or the part of the plan was for the senior space, because we're their tenants. So, they're giving us an envelope space. So, white walls, bathrooms, there's been discussion about where the stairs have to go and ramps and things like that. But we haven't hired an architect, because there's...
They had agreed to do that.
They agreed to do the build-out. Anything attached to the building, which are cabinets and things like that, are part of the plan.
But we should be involved in that conversation as a council, because there's costs associated with that, right?
We're not at any cost phases or anything yet.
So, we're getting the build-out for free?
We're getting, they're going to find out and confirm that the cabinets, anything that physically is attached to the walls, we were to leave as tenants, anything that remains in the space is to be provided and paid for by the builder, and that is the kitchen cabinets. That's pretty much all that we are doing. The programming, tables and chairs and things like that, we're not even close to that yet.
That's what we would pay for.
That's what we would come, pay for out of the 300,000, that is part of the, of the Morgan Trust portion.
So, with the design of this, this build-out, is, like, we're, we're not part of those discussions, so that's all I'm asking, I guess.
Design, I, I guess I don't know what you mean as far as design. Doors are, doors are in place.
Well, you talked about like the, like, like, warming oven or...
Do you want to be part of the conversation of how, why the cabinets are?
I think the council needs to be part of the council.
We did, we formed a subcommittee. I know I was on, and that's why I bring it up, because we were at a point when the building, when we lost, once the building is theirs and they're doing the outfit and we become the tenants, like, once that line is crossed, now as us as a future tenant of this space, the idea was just like the library, that there was a group from the council that was part of the decision-making for the departments that were going to go in there, how it was going to get laid out, and the budget of what was going to be needed for funding, because our, our funding was limited based on the amount we were receiving back from the Morgan Trust and everything. So, that's, it was similar to the library, and we, that was like the same model. So, I guess I'm just wondering at what point we were crossing into that, where those decisions are collectively being made of how that space is going to be outfitted? And if, you know, they're, they're doing the hard infrastructure, removing a bathroom or removing water lines, you know, what are we putting in for sinks, stoves or cooking and all of those pieces? Because that could potentially be over budget if whatever budget's going to be.
So, from my understanding, anything that's attached to the building is there. So, if you, like, if you rent an apartment, the kitchen and cabinet's already there. So, they've asked us simple questions, do we need an electric stove or a gas stove? Those are questions that, electric stove, you know, to keep it a warming kitchen, that's the safer and least...
Because they have to know if they're going to run a gas in there.
Right, things like that.
Right, right. But that was, if we're buying the gas stove to put in there, we're buying the pieces and parts to, that we're going to be a tenant of.
Right, so we haven't changed that initial, we haven't changed the initial budget that was presented by Carl.
Okay.
There's nothing that changed on that, it's still, that's the budget we've estimated off, but we haven't done any, other than like saying, is it a 36-inch stove or something like that?
I'm sort of, I mean, I don't think, I mean, do we even know what's going in there?
Senior.
I know, but I mean, when we talked to Christine, and she came here and she gave us her overview about what she would like to see, but we never had another meeting with her to say, this is what we're going to do. Because we're, if you're at the infancy stages of this is what, it's a senior center, understood, got it, but, so like, we're getting cabinets, we're getting an oven, we're getting this, we're getting that, like, what, what, because we're going to get into a position of, what then does that cost the town? Because there's still the directors, who's, who's working, is it just Christina? So, there seems to be something going on where there's some discussions at the bigger picture about where we're going to end up with the senior center? So, my only question is, what is this going to cost the town? Like, is it just Christina working there, or is she hiring another person doing, what is the additional cost associated with that? Because we are paying for that as a town. That's going to be our dime from that, that point going forward.
I understand, but we are not at, we are hardly close to the staffing need yet, because we haven't even come up with programming and hours of operation, any of that. That is well down the road. But the design, welcome to sit with the subcommittee and, and share...
I don't think the subcommittee even met.
No, no.
That's what I'm saying, I don't, I wasn't even aware of that. Okay, more than happy to circle everyone, loop everyone in and...
And maybe we get to look at the plan again, it's been a long time since we've seen the plan. We've forgotten it, okay. Oh, okay, so...
Still moving.
Yeah.
Like, goes slow, like, there's nothing for months, and then we get a phone call that they need to move this, because it got kicked back from the health department and, you know, so...
All right, so, looking for a motion to allow the town manager to sign the access and due diligence agreement and the historic rehabilitation tax credit application on behalf of the town.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
More discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Now, item number nine, the line item transfer request, and that is from the Clinton Volunteer Fire Department.
Bob, can you have that?
Yeah, it's a transfer within the line item, in the line item, so it was funded, you know, for additional cost, maybe, this was a transfer.
Okay. All right. Has everyone seen a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay. To decrease salaries, utilities, and...
Yes.
So, is there a motion?
Throw motion.
Second. Second, all right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right, and now it's time for the finance director's report.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. You just got, I recognize, you just got the report tonight. Any questions after reading it after this, I'll be happy to answer through the chair. Fiscal year end is coming to a close. Things have been pretty stable compared to the last reports. The bright, well, there's, it's all bright, but the revenues are really doing, really doing well. So, if you look on page one, in the balance column, negative amounts means a surplus. Now that I brought up the word surplus, a lot of times we, we hear the word surplus, we have a surplus. Well, there's two sides to the budget, there's the expenditure side, revenue side, we may have a surplus on the expenditure side, maybe a surplus on the revenue side. And a surplus, what it does, if, in, in total totality, it increases fund balance. But if you look on your revenue budget, and if you budget the use of fund balance, you're budgeting a deficit, right? Because if you're using fund balance, that's automatically a deficit.
So, if you have a surplus, you use less fund balance?
Right, so, so we, when we talk about surplus is on the revenue side, we're talking about the individual revenue accounts, which I've highlighted, and what that does, if you have a surplus in revenue line items, it does, it, it reduces that budgeted use of fund balance, which is, which is a good thing.
Which you put in red on page two, you have very good eye on that.
Right, so, it... That's, that's, that's correct. So, on page two, the, we budgeted the use of fund balance a little bit over $4 million. We're actually using $2.3 million, which, which gives us more flexibility in, in the future years. So, property taxes, we have a nice surplus of $288,000, mainly prior year taxes, interestingly, and it's helped that. And our intergovernmental revenues, it shows a positive $46,000 in the totals column, but actually, at fiscal year-end, it will be a surplus of $145,000, because we've received the, the grants for municipalities, $191,000, that's been received after this report.
So, this is, this is as of, what, this is as of...
Yeah, but, we, we just received it, it hasn't been entered into the system. Charges for services have, has been really positive, will, will have a surplus of about $200,000. Most of these charges for services are, are in, are in surplus. So we're doing well there. And, like we've been talking all year long, interest on investments, we'll have a surplus of around $700,000. So revenues are really looking good on the expenditure side. I think last report I said would have a surplus around $400,000, I, I changed it to $300,000 on this report, because we have a pending heart and hypertension case. I was being conservative, it probably will be, could be $400,000, but I just kept it at three for the purposes of this report. Investments, interest rates are still remaining stable, for instance, the stiff rate, last report was 4.43, it stayed at 4.43. But currently, today, it's 4.39.
That, that $300,000 to $400,000 surplus you were talking about, will that drive down that, the use of fund balance even more?
Well, I've, I've incorporated the estimates in, in there. The general fund, fund balance, at, at the end of the fiscal year, remains at 23% of total budget, as we know that our target is, is 20%. So there's a little flexibility there. In the next year's budget, we're using a little bit over $2 million for use of fund balance, and obviously, the budget after that's not going to be $2 million, it's going to be less. Continuity account, I didn't include a report, because it's the same, there's really not much in there, same as prior months.
If we, if we had used $4 million on balance, would we have reached our 20%?
Um...
You don't have to...
No.
But, it would, it would have been close.
It would have been close. Right. Would have been close. We wouldn't have any flexibility at all. Yeah. Yep. General comments, the auditors were here today, doing onsite interim work, and at the same time, discussing our accounting procedures and internal controls. They've also, we've also given them year-to-date transactions, both on the revenue side, expenditure side, for all funds, and, and they basically, at the office, they pull out samples and, and request backup information, which we, we give them. They're scheduled back after the books are closed. We close the books around the first week of September, it takes that, takes that long. Morgan School Construction, state audit continues. The auditor was here for two or three days, took all the information, went back to the office, did more audit work, and we've just received an email with more requests on more documentation, so we're in the middle of providing that. But on that same note, I just wanted to note that any final grant that we receive is, is going to be applied to the construction fund for that Morgan School.
When you say grant, we need to talk about grant.
The result of this audit, we're going to get the final...
That's just our reimbursement, that's not a grant.
Right. It's a school construction grant.
Yeah, but, it's reimbursement of our funds.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
But, now you're saying that it's going to be applied to the construction fund?
Yes, there's still a deficit in that construction fund. Most, a million dollars. About, about a million.
Are you saying that the construction of the high school was over a million dollars, over what, it was budgeted?
No, it wasn't over budgeted. What happens is, on school construction funds, let's say, a school's $50 million, you get permission to bond 50 million, offset by school construction grants. You're not going to bond that full 50 million, you're going to wait, first of all, you may spend 49 million, right? So you're not going to bond the whole amount. You're going to bond 5 million less. Then you're going to get the school construction grants in, that's going to be applied. At the very end, you don't know what school grant you're going to get, right? Because of the audit. So you're never going to fully bond a school construction project until you know what your final grant is. So in this fund right now, there's a deficit, and when we get that grant in, it's going to be applied to the deficit. Any, any amount left will have to be bonded, and, and it's already authorized. Yeah.
How, how much is open to authorize? We, we retire, whatever we don't issue bond for, we just retire the authorization.
That's right, we're de-authorized. Right? But it's, I mean, this was here when I got here, but it's typical.
Well, I think we ought to talk to the chairman of the building, the high, the high school building committee, Jerry Veas, because he's under the understanding, as I am, that eventually, we were going to get back $1 million, and that we weren't going to apply it towards any other shortage in another construction fund.
No, no, no.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you what, he was led to believe, and I was led to believe, so I think we ought to get some parties all together in the same room to hash this out, because, quite frankly, Jerry's one of the fellows that keeps asking me to come here and say, hey, where's our reimbursement money coming? Because he expects that it was going to be close to $1 million, $900 and some odd thousand.
I hope it is. Because that's the deficit. And it's not a, not a construction fund, it's the Morgan School Construction Fund.
And, and the audit, you would expect the audit's going to be funded, and it would be. There's no expectation is a problem in the audit.
Right, I, I don't have any idea what the, the amount will be.
But, what you're saying is, Dennis and Jerry, and, and myself, because of what Dennis told me, we were thinking we would be plus a million, and what you're saying is, it's going to break even.
Right, you, you never, you never plus anything in a construction fund. You spend 50 million, it's going to be funded partly by bonds, partly by school construction grants, and whatever else, right? You're never going to have a surplus in a construction fund.
But, but if...
If you do, you're over-bonded.
Yes.
And then you get in trouble.
Oh, we might have overbonded.
And then you get in trouble, no, we're not overbonded. You're always under-bonded until you get your final grant, so you know...
What's your word here for that, so you don't know? You might have overbonded.
No, I've, I've, I've seen the accounting records, no. No. It's all on the books.
And you can't overbond anyways, so you're in trouble.
You can over, you, you can overbond if, if you get a grant that you didn't expect, and therefore, you're overbonded, but there's a way to handle that. You can, you can transfer those bond proceeds to another capital project, so, you know, you have to consult with...
The bond was for $64 million. That's what we bonded, $64 million for that high school.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to supply the accounting detail. I have it. Exactly.
This is news to me, we're going to break out even.
You, you can't make a profit on a school construction fund.
You were secretary there, for our committee. Will Jerry be surprised?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? I do have one, oh, are you, are you not finished? Now that the, the east end sidewalk is complete, there will be reimbursement coming for that.
We've received it.
Oh, you've received it, already?
How much?
That was fast.
A little bit over $800,000, cost of the project.
I got another question, unrelated. There, there was a thing that we had assigned, sent to the auditorium about...
Oh, yeah, I was supposed to, yeah, all right. Sorry about that.
You know, what, what's, what's the overage on the legal services? We budgeted 110, we were at 169?
Yeah, and we, and the next meeting will supply detail on, on, legal.
Is that it? All right, thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, town manager's report?
So, I want to share that. We, so, I have, we hired the economic development coordinator, took some time, but we did, and many of you have his resume here, it's Alan Felgate, which many of you know, and many of the council that were here at the broker's breakfast yesterday, met, but most of you know him already. So he officially started on Monday, and he is in the process of, going to be working with me, and meeting with Dale, to get some goals, and working with Abby, and setting up standing meetings, and all of that. So I just want to share his resume with everyone. He's very excited, very close ties to the community, and I think he'll be a great asset to...
Thank you.
And, library update, we're in, I'm sorry, for Henry on Main, we're in the process of, I'm waiting to get an approval from the owners of the building. Mary, Beth, and I did a walk-through today, and I also met with the chief there today to address some of the parking concerns, some things that we made, we did a crosswalk, which there was one previously when the library was there, so that has to be put back in. And, the goal is to have an opening day of July 50th, so...
All right.
Maybe working towards that.
On, on that parking stuff, that you talked about, you said the chief was there talking about parking, there, there was a thought that Charlie talked about, that Daniel Veas being a one-way?
Yeah, we talked about that, it's very complicated, it's not an easy ask, but I think once we get the library up and running, and things, and the coffee shop, if there is a demand for it, then we can explore it, but it's not very, it's not easy, it's a long process, and because it butts up to a state road, and there's a traffic light there, and I believe it was proposed, I was shared, she, she'd shared with me before, that it was attempted in the past, and it wasn't well-received. So, I don't know, it was when CVS was being built. So, I don't know, maybe the families have changed, but it's something we can revisit, but it is, it is a very tedious process.
Who's, like, we're, we're leasing that space? The town?
Yes, we discussed, yes.
No, I, I was, I missed the meaning, so that's why I'm just trying to follow. So we're signing a lease with the owner of the building to lease that space?
Certain square footage is the...
Right, okay. And then, so what about, like, what are the other costs?
He is paying all the utilities, and for the daily cleaning, so there is no cost.
Well, insurance, no?
No, he's insured, I mean, I can, I'll talk to our insurance agents and ask if we can add that, like, the front section, the two of the insurance, but the building, we're tenants, so they would have the insurance.
Well, you still need then a renter's insurance policy to protect yourself, right?
Right, I will, yes, I will speak to the insurance.
So there's a cost associated with the renter's, okay. So, it's not his, we still would have to secure insurance. Okay. And we don't have to clean the building?
No, he's going to have the studio, or take care of the cleaning every day.
Okay.
Because they have the cafe, so it has to be done.
And so this comes out of town money?
So we have extra funds that were not expended in economic development, because of the position not being filled, so we were able to use those funds.
So it's still our, that's still our money, though?
Yeah.
Right.
For, for one year, it's, it's only a one-year lease, and there's no money in the next budget for it, so we'll have to figure it out a year from now.
Right, this is for, right, for one year.
So there's enough money to pay the, the one-year lease?
Yes. 1450, 14, four is it, and I think, I apologize, it was professional services, we had 16,000 in it. So, yesterday morning, we had a broker's breakfast, the EDC let it off, and with Dale, and thank you to all the council members who showed up, it was very well-attended, we had about 40 people. I've received a lot of feedback, that it's something that they would like more of, a lot of convers, a lot of topics were covered, and I think that's, it's important to start having those conversations. So, it was a great success. Also, Beach Park Road is, you probably saw, there's some road closure signs that went up, letting people know that as of July 7th, the road will be closed. It has been getting a lot of feedback, primarily, the people are going to the traffic and police commission meetings. We are in the final stages of getting frequently asked questions, page made up. We were waiting on information from the develop, the construction company, and Ducks Unlimited, who are doing the project, and now we're waiting on the police commission and the chief to put in some of the traffic-related questions that they were fielding, and we will get that out on social media, website, in the news alert system, and in the man, town manager update. The SEAMERS, the application for the police pension is scheduled to be approved by the state on Friday, and the state will be putting out a press release on Monday announcing the move to SEAMERS, and...
Okay. Any questions?
Is Dale still working off the 30,000 that we gave him?
Yeah. He's all part-time.
And when does that expire? How long do we have, Dale?
We have him really until the money runs out, because we have the contract, so the money's been allocated for him. So, his billing, it depends on the months, like, you know, this, he'll, he's put more in this month because he did the breakfast, and then, with working with Alan, and then slowly, he'll, it'll teeter off.
Any other questions? No? All right. So for the chair report, I, I've, I was thrilled to read the Plan of Conservation Development draft, because I recognized a lot of the goals that I feel that we have as a council. And it's nice to know that at this moment, and I understand it's a draft, but at this moment in time, that we as a town government, and all of our aspects are working together towards the same goals, which is probably a good recipe for success. Most of us have received our tax bills, and I would like to congratulate the council for financially supporting our entire town in the budget, including schools, and DPW, and human services, and police, and fire, and library, and town hall, and support staff. And when I'm asked questions as to why we supported something that that particular resident didn't approve of, I can confidently tell them that for a successful and sustainable town, it's necessary to invest in all aspects of that town. On June 10th, I believe, that was Michelle's first anniversary, and I would like to make the comment that she took our job description very seriously, and she has run with it, from communications, to economic development, to making herself known to the community, developing public and private partnerships, improving infrastructure through grants, and collaborative working style. In our town manager search brochure, it read, "The town manager must be a leader who collaborates with the town council, regional entities, and state agencies to champion town efforts." Which led directly to what I found on the Council of Municipality, CCM's website, there was Michelle doing a video, speaking to the value of their leadership education programs for a video on their website, the first of such. So she is finding a lot of outlets, and speaking to a lot of people who are putting us on the map. The downtown is visibly changing for the better, and it is one thing that the majority of residents agree on, that that should happen. Eric Bergman would like a council representative to welcome visiting high school students from different parts of the country on July 2nd, and he asked me to extend that invitation, because I won't be able to, I, I won't be here, so I won't be able to do that, and he would love to have one of us speak to the kids who are visiting us. And that is it for the chairman's report. Is there any council discussion?
I just have one question. How, you related to the, the old dump recap there, the solar, how's that moving along?
We're still, we're still waiting. There was a little bit of, there was a little bit of an issue with DEEP, saying that there was something from 19, was it 1986? 1996, that was a long time ago. So, they were working with them to try to uncover what that was. So, we have tried numerous times to get them here to give the council an update, but they were still waiting for the stamp of approval from DEEP, because it doesn't make sense to give you an update if it's not going to move forward. But, I believe they're getting what they needed, so there should be an update coming soon. We're constantly poking them.
Is that related to the lagoon, too? Or is that some unrelated...
Is that related to the lagoon too, or is that some unrelated, that, that parcel that Matt Kenny?
It ended up being.
We're trying to get a clearance from DEEP for that too.
I think it was the two houses by the dump that were getting the water.
Hmm.
Yes. So, but it was so long ago, finding the documentation, we didn't have anything on the town side. So the company handling it went back to DEEP and said, you're saying we have this, can you show us what it is? Because we have no record of it. So we're making progress.
Is there, is there an update on the bath house?
Bath house is pretty much finished up, it should be opening this weekend according, I had a conversation on update with Bo yesterday on some projects. So they're just finishing up, trying to figure out, there's a little bit of a step.
So they just did, they just took the money and then?
They stayed within the, under the fifty percent of the value, yes. And it's beautiful. I have not yet been down there, but it's, Bo said it came out really nicely.
Any other? All right, any town council committee or liaison reports?
Sorry, I missed you.
Sorry, Dennis. No one else? Okay. So is there a motion to go into an executive session?
And you have to invite David.
So moved. And I will invite David Ryan and Mary and Michelle.
Mary won't be in it.
Not Mary, but Michelle.
No. Because it's.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
First, I'd like a motion to amend the agenda and add a sixteen A heart and hypertension case payment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Who's keeping the minutes of who, how to vote?
I'll do that, thank you very much for reminding me. Okay, so.
He's not here.
All right. Who, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Thank you. Next, who was next?
Chris, second.
Thank you. All right. So let's begin with item number sixteen, a motion to approve the tentative agreement as presented for the DPW contracts.
Tentative agreement, contract.
Yes, tentative agreement. As presented and authorized, given the typo corrections.
So moved.
All right. Second? All right, Chris. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Great. Sixteen A, motion to approve the payment for the heart and hypertension case.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Great. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Second?
Aye.